Good morning. I'd like to call to order the meeting of Deschutes County Commissioners, May 4, 2022. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Time for citizen input? Rondo? No, nothing today. Okay, well, we saw you there. Okay, thought I should acknowledge you. Stephanie, do we have anyone with a raised hand on Zoom? All right, so we will have no citizen input this morning. We have a consent agenda.
Move approval of the consent agenda.
And I will second it.
Any further discussion?
Just acknowledging the great work the Finance Department's doing. You know, we had the federal dollars. We've really allocated the far majority of those, that $38 million fund. And now we're going to be in a track for a career, to keep track of it for the next couple of years. And then, as we discussed in the past, you know, maybe growing into that position also. So, pretty exciting.
Okay, Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner Devon?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. All right, we have action item number one. We have a public hearing. Kristi.
Good morning. For the record, Kristi Bollinger, Deschutes County Property Management. Do we open the public hearing first, or how are we?
Can we give a real brief report or overview, and then the board will open it?
Yes.
So, this purpose of this public hearing is to hear any public comments concerning an intended conveyance of a .04 acre property that was acquired through tax foreclosure in 2004. The city's doing a city project, sewer project, and this property is technically, it's adjacent to a right-of-way, so it makes a lot of sense to convey this piece of property to the city. So, seeing that it was a tax-foreclosed property, it requires public hearing prior to conveyance to another agency.
Okay, so I will open the public hearing at that, at this time, then. Thank you, Kristi. Do we have anyone from the public that wants to testify? Anyone on Zoom? No one's on Zoom? So, we'll close the public hearing, then. I believe we aren't taking any written record either. It seems like you've given us the implications. It's a very, very small piece of property valued at $1, 1,730, but it will help with this phasing. So, just kind of cleaning up what we own and what the city needs to do. Are there any comments from the board?
A great opportunity for infrastructure, and then also just getting it off the books of Deschutes County, so it's one less little teeny parcel to have to keep track of.
No comment.
Okay, so, closing, we've closed the hearing, we've closed public comments, written comments. Is it possible to have a motion?
Yes, you can take action right now.
Okay, great. And the order number actually is corrected at 20 dash, 2022-023. It was, just to update your records, please.
So, I'll make that motion. So, I'll move the intention to convey the county-owned property located at Ferguson Road to the City of Bend by order number 2022-023. Second.
Any further discussion? Commissioner Devon?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. And the order number was correct on the attachment, so thank you, Kristi, for pointing that out.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, item number two. Is Cody available?
He is.
Good morning, Board.
Good morning, Cody.
For the record, Cody Smith, county engineer, Deschutes County Road Department. So, the Road Department prepared bid solicitation documents for the Slurry Seal 2022 Various Maintenance Zones Project. The scope of work for this project includes application of an emulsified asphalt slurry seal coat on approximately 9.3 miles of county local roads. These are residential-type roads in three different neighborhoods around the county. Those neighborhoods are the Lazy River South neighborhood and the La Pine area, the Equestrian Meadows neighborhood in the Terrebonne area, and the Sherwood Estates neighborhood, also in the Terrebonne area. The bid invitation was advertised in the Daily Journal of Commerce and the Bend Bulletin on April 6. The department opened bids on April 27. Three bids were received. Before you this morning, Board, is a notice of intent to award contract to Cave Northwest, Inc., with a contract amount of $326,120. Issuance of notice of intent to award will begin a one-week protest period for concerned parties to contest a word of the contract. If no protest are received during that one-week period, the contract will be awarded administratively. Just a couple of things to note here. The contract unit price here at $2.30 a square yard is approximately a 47% increase over the unit price that we saw last year at $1.56 a square yard. So, the, we're experiencing this across the board, in particular with asphalt oil prices, sharp increases in those. In terms of project schedule, the contract, under the contract, the work for this project cannot begin until June 21. So, that's after school is out, so that we're not conflicting with school, bus, school, going to school, coming home from school type activities. And the contract completion date is August 31. We anticipate the work, there's approximately six days of work here under this project. Each area is going to be divided up into different stages with different road segments in it. At each stage, those road segments, in each stage, will be closed for approximately eight hours to allow for application and cure time for the slurry seal treatment. The residents on those streets will be notified a minimum of two weeks in advance of each closure. And as we get our contractors' schedule, we'll be, you know, we'll be sharing that information best we can. With those closures, those will be fairly short road segments, so accommodations will be made for folks who have to, you know, utilize their driveways during those periods of time to park, you know, within a block or two of their driveway for the day, so they can, they can easily access their property during that day. With that, I'll turn it back over to the board and happy to answer any questions.
So, Cody, you'd already, your estimate actually had already gone up to the higher price because you knew it was coming?
Yeah, we, we were, we were looking at bid prices that were received for other projects around the state, and even in our area, cities of Bend and Redmond had let their, their slurry seal projects earlier than us. So, so our, our engineers' estimate had been adjusted early this year to reflect those bid prices we were seeing in other, other areas.
But this one is 40,000 less than the estimates, so that's perhaps shocking?
A little bit. I mean, part of that is the contractor doing the work here is a, is a contract that's located in Oregon. They, they seem to be a little more selective on which projects they bid on. They're usually not bidding on the bigger city projects compared to some of the other slurry seal contractors that we usually see. This contractor, I believe, their intent, I think they also have the contract to do slurry seal work for, for the Sun River Owners Association this season, so I think they've kind of tied it to that work, and so there's a little bit of scale of economy there.
Okay, that's good to know.
I have a thought. So, what is slurry seal cost relative to chip seal? Is that, is that a different scale of cost?
Yeah, a little bit different scale of cost to chip seal. We, we'll have kind of updated unit prices for chip seal this year with the, with the rapid increase in cost for asphalt oil. But the chip seals were typically, at least I'll say last year, we're looking at around $2 a square yard on average. The, why we have, we, the department have moved to slurry seal for certain residential streets is we can be very economical and very productive with chip seal on our longer segment roads, our arterial collector-type roads, where we can move, move a little quicker and recover, covering longer distances. On the shorter segment residential streets, in particular where we're dealing with, you know, short dead-end streets, cul-de-sacs, those kind of things, we lose a lot of that productivity. It's, it's that, that whole train of equipment required for the chip seal makes that, that work a little less cost prohibitive, but, or, excuse me, a little more cost prohibitive. So, this, the slurry seal application is a much quicker, better application for these lower-volume, lower-speed residential streets. The wearing surface it leaves is a much less aggressive wearing surface, so it's a little more, you know, friendly to skateboards and those kind of things. So, yeah, this, this is, this is a pretty typical application for, for road agencies to use on these, on these smaller, or lower-volume residential-type streets.
And I understand, yeah, so they're generally about the same cost, but you'll lose the efficiency of just being able to roll down the long straightaway with the chip seal. So, I could see. So, yeah, I was wondering if it was, you know, twice as much or some, some big number, but it's not, unless you lose that efficiency.
Yeah, they're, 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 they're close to the same price here. The, 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 the surface treatment we're left with with the chip seal is certainly a much, a much better overall product. It, it lasts us longer, but for these lower-volume, lower-speed type streets, it's, it's, there's really not that much more benefit to that chip seal versus a slurry seal.
Well, I did a detailed inspection at about one and a half miles of that last night with my dog dragging me around the loop, so, at Lazy River South. So, I did the inspection last night, and it's a little bit cracked up, but not in bad shape, so I know we have an aggressive maintenance program, and that's the value of this, is being able to keep the roads in good order, you know, seven-to-10-year cycles that don't watch the degradation happen. So, yeah, it's really good to be able to do that. Okay, I'm excited about that. As I say, this will be my, one of those is my neighborhood.
I'll move approval of the board chair's signature of document 2022-349.
And acknowledging that it, one of those is my neighborhood, but no conflict, but I'll second it.
Okay, any further discussion? Thank you for clarifying that. Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And Commissioner Devon?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Thank you very much, Cody.
Thank you.
Okay. We are now looking at the second reading of CPACE.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Eric Crop, Deputy County Administrator. Two weeks ago, the board passed the CPACE resolution and also had first reading of the ordinance. CPACE is Commercial Property Assessed Clean Energy. The board passed the resolution and did first reading after a public hearing. Today is scheduled for second reading by title only and adoption of the ordinance. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Eric.
Well, I'd just like to say congratulations. I know the advocates are here also, and, you know, it's been a long journey. You know, I'm interested in seeing what projects pop up now, so this is, this is the next step. So, who's, who's out there really dreaming and talking about their fundraiser, you know, their, their capital stack, their, their funds for door projects? So, excited to see how this rolls out.
Yes.
Eric, I'm, I'm curious how the, how the plans to operationalize this are proceeding? Like, do we have a vision for how this would work in-house at the county and, you know, through other kind of structures?
Yeah, we're working through that right now. There is a, a position proposed in the, in the budget that would work on this program. Obviously, it'll work closely with our community development department and also the cities. Until that position is on, is hired, I'll probably be taking the lead on, on getting the program up and running. Or, or we might look at some, trying to get a on-call or temp staff.
Thank you. And will, will have a, will there be a formal discussion and, and procedure on that, or?
We'll come back on, on the fee structure for the program, so there'll be some further discussion with the board on that. And then, other than that, it's more administrate, on the administrative side.
Thanks. I'll move approval of ordinance number 2022-005 and ordinance enacting Section 4.35 of the Deschutes County Code.
We need second, second reading by title only.
Sorry.
Yeah, it's okay.
We need to do that first. Okay. I'll move the second reading by title only of ordinance number 2022-005 and ordinance enacting Section 4.35 of the Deschutes County Code.
And I will second it.
Any further discussion? Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And Commissioner Devon?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Moving second reading by title only and ordinance enacting Section 4.35 of the Deschutes County Code, ordinance number 2022-005. And we need to approve of.
Yeah, I'll move approval of ordinance number 2022-005. Adoption, yep, adoption of this ordinance. Second.
Okay, any further discussion?
Just acknowledging that it's a 90-day implementation at this point in time, so it's been first and second reading, and this is to be implemented 90 days from now.
Okay, Commissioner Devon?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, adoption, adoption of ordinance number 2022-005. So, in 90 days, and hopefully in 90 days, we'll have the employee, and it'll all fit together.
Looking forward to hearing from people who want to use this financing tool.
Yes. Thank you so much. Okay, item number five, consideration of board signature with the St. Charles Pez and Sage View contract.
Morning, Commissioners. For the record, Janice Garceau, Director of Behavioral Health for Deschutes County Health Services. I am here this morning to request approval and board signature for the St. Charles Pez and Sage View contract, which is document number 2022-007. This contract renewal, as you know, supports the St. Charles healthcare system in providing both secure inpatient acute psychiatric care to residents of Deschutes County, Crook County, and Jefferson County at Sage View, which is a 12-bed inpatient unit, and at the Pez unit, which is a five-bed ED-based hold service for individuals who need to be served out of the ED for psychiatric emergencies. This particular contract is in the amount of $330,000, and it specifically covers services to individuals who are un- or underinsured. So, individuals that must be hospitalized, do not have adequate coverage to pay for that service, and this reimburses the hospital at a bed day rate for those services to those individuals. And that sums it up.
Janice, how many days?
If you have questions?
Yes, how many days can they be held in the Pez unit? The five-bed unit?
It's indefinite, frankly. The goal is to only have people there for several days. Unfortunately, because of the issues that you're very aware of in terms of access to inpatient offerings for children and for adults, we've had people held in the Pez unit for 60 or 90 days, which is really not ideal.
Janice, yesterday at the Public Health Advisory Board meeting, we heard about St. Charles ramping up an internship program, essentially for, I, I'm, for, for residents, for, you know, people who've completed their, their medical training, physicians, who then, you know, do a residency at a hospital. One of the things that was mentioned was that this, this, you know, one of the specialties that they mentioned, that, that this residency program might be a good track to bring more capacity to St. Charles for, was psychiatry, psychiatric services. I'm wondering, I know that we have capacity constraints, both at the Pez and, and at Sage View, and I'm wondering whether those are more physical, like the number of rooms and beds is not enough, or whether it's more staffing, you know, you know, skilled psychiatric practitioners, or both?
It's really both. The number of beds, given the need for additional treatment beds in the community, is probably always going to be under pressure. 12 beds has been the number for many, many years. The Pez unit is just five beds and really should never be larger than that, frankly. The ED is not a place to have treatment occur long-term for people with psychiatric disorders. And then, I think psychiatric staff, but not just psychiatry, skilled behavioral health nursing has definitely been, I think, a challenge in particular for Sage View. And then, of course, COVID impacted their census and ability to serve as many individuals. So, between all of those things, there's some real pressure. And I would say, I don't want to speak for the hospital, they're going to be more expert on this, but I can tell you even in our, in our services, finding nurses who are skilled enough to work with this population, willing to work with the population, is equally, if not more, challenging at the moment than finding psychiatric staff. So, it's a double challenge for the hospital.
One other question I had was, I mean, I know that we coordinate and discuss this, this partnership with St. Charles with a more long-term view, but this contract is for one year. And I'm, I'm wondering if there's, if there's some other kind of like higher-level agreement that we do on a multi-year basis, and then we do these one-year contracts? Or, or is this the primary vehicle for kind of formalizing that relationship, and we're just doing it for one year right now?
Well, we have varying forms of MOUs with St. Charles that we periodically renegotiate to address our agreements about how we operate all of our shared responsibilities together, whether that be how we respond to the ED in the event of crisis. And there is an MOU, I believe specifically, that we've been working on for some time related to our long-term relationship with Sage, with St. Charles around the Sage View offering. We renegotiate this every year because the rates, there's built into the agreement a commitment that we increase the bed day rate annually if we are able. And we have been able to do that, probably not at the level that the hospital would hope, but at least incrementally each year, we've been able to increase the rate, so that the contract does get revisited from that perspective as well. And each year, we have tweaked or made adjustments to the performance metrics, because there's a performance incentive payment built into the contract of 10% if they perform on certain metrics that we've negotiated between us.
Thank you. I guess one, one, one more question is, so, through this contract, we, we, you know, the state, and we support the indigent population being able to use Sage View and the Pez. And for, you know, non-indigent, non-indigent members of our community, when they, you go to Sage View or go to the Pez, is it just that their insurance is covering their, their stay or their visit there?
Yes, that's the idea. I think it depends on who your insurer is and what your level of coverage is, but yes. And if the individuals qualify as being indigent by virtue of income, have insurance but are underinsured, these dollars can be applied to help cover those costs as well.
Do we, do we have any sense of kind of, you know, how, what, what the ratios are of, you know, kind of like indigent versus non-indigent use of these facilities?
I don't know about the ratio. I know that we get a report, because we're required to report on bed day use for the indigent population, so we know the numbers. And I'd have to go into my system and find the report to give you the numbers, but we do, we do know the numbers of people and how many days they're utilizing. I don't know what the ratio is with respect to the population. I would guess, and this is just a guess, that it is not dissimilar from our own service population. So, roughly 56% of our service population has OHP. Another 12 to 15% is insured, and the median income of the people we serve is still around $16,000 a year, so typically a fairly indigent population. That may be different at the hospital, in particular in Sage View, but I would guess the ratio is fairly small of uninsured to those who are insured with OHP or commercial insurance. But it's a, it's a complete guess at this point.
Good to know, thank you.
If you would like me to get that data, I will follow up with my hospital contact, and I'm sure they have fiscal dashboards and could put their hands on that relatively quickly.
I would be interested in, 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 you know, because it, what that mix of different insured kinds of patients is probably, you know, has significant implications for how, you know, how, you know, how excited St. Charles is to operate this facility and, or to consider expansions or things like that.
Yeah, I do know, Commissioner, that St. Charles operates this facility at a loss every year. The cost of providing this service compared to the reimbursement rates from multiple streams rarely keep pace, so this is at least a way to offset some of that loss. It's certainly not a gain. It just offsets how deeply in the red this particular offering might be. And we're really grateful to the hospital that they've maintained Sage View, in particular through a time of incredible fiscal pressure on hospitals due to COVID. So, we're glad to have this resource in the community, glad they've continued their commitment to it, and hope that at some point it can grow.
Thank you.
Great, so, yeah, just Commissioner Chang kind of crossed the concept here, but so this is from January 1 to December 1 this calendar year, so we're a few months into this contract already, and we'll, we'll see a version of this next year also. next year also.
Hopefully sooner.
Yep, that's it.
Always nice to have something in place before the year starts.
Yeah.
But that, yeah, I can.
So Janice, you don't believe that they would increase the number of beds then at Sage View? That isn't in the plan? Because this is such a loss?
That is not in the current plan. I mean, I honestly, Commissioners, I think the hospital is going to spend the next two years recovering from the impact of the pandemic on elective procedures, which is really how they generate revenue. And I don't think any sort of expansion is in the cards anytime soon. Not for lack of interest, but just the realities of what we've all been through together as a community.
Now, that doesn't mean that there aren't opportunities to expand treatment beds of less acute, you know, for less acute needs in our community in the foreseeable future, which I believe that the state is even putting some dollars behind. Is that, is that correct?
That's correct. The RFP or RFA, I think they're calling it, from the Oregon Health Authority dropped on the 30th. And that has two streams of funding, one for supported housing, treatment housing, and the other for licensed residential treatment facilities. We are working on an application in collaboration with Best Care and another partner and the CCO to stand up an additional 16-bed SRTF. Again, at this point, it is a plan. We still have to submit an application, be funded, and have all the pieces come together. And then the CCO is really interested in, and still exploring whether or not to try to also stand up something for children. We have not yet landed on what we think the best approach might be. And then, as you're aware, we received housing dollars. That application is also out. We'll be submitting for those dollars, although they're guaranteed, and they will be used to match the housing applications that are likely to come from the partners. I know that's complicated, but it's good news in that it virtually doubled the amount of money available to help communities try to stand up additional treatment beds.
And how that might relate to the PES and Sage View is that if there were those kinds of treatment facilities available, expanded capacity in those kinds of treatment facilities available, maybe there would be places for people to go from Sage View or the PES that, and could relieve a little bit of the pinch on capacity there.
Absolutely, absolutely. Especially, well, probably for both, but for the PES unit to have a step-down opportunity for someone who may not be appropriate for Sage View or may not be willing to go to Sage View would be enormously beneficial. And then having something like a secure residential treatment facility does offer a step-down opportunity too for individuals who are on civil commitment in Sage View and need a secure placement that isn't the hospital level of care. So in both instances, both on the front end and on the back end, it would help relieve some pressure.
Yeah, in my mind, I'm starting to build like a, like a box chart model when, and starting to understand how people move from one box to the other and, starting to understand.
Yeah.
It's pretty complicated.
It is complicated, but what we're hoping for is a continuum of care across the full range of need. And this is really the acute population that we're talking about here.
Thank you. I'll move approval and board signature of St. Charles PES Sage View Contract Number 2022-007.
And I will second it.
Any further discussion? Mr. Chang?
Yes.
Mr. Devon?
Yes.
And the Chair both yes.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Janice.
Have a good day.
Yes, thank you. Okay, item number six. Let's see. Is it Dr. Bacho that's going to be with us? No? Yes. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, Commissioners. So for the record, Rita Bacho, I'm the Program Manager for Public Health Advancement and Protection. I'm joined by my colleagues Kathy Christensen. She's a supervisor for the HIV STD Adolescent Health Programs. And then we have our staff here to give us moral support, Amber Knapp, who is a public health nurse. We also have Charlotte Jones, she's also a public health nurse, and Vinnie Consilier, he's the EISO, which is HIV Early Intervention Services and Outreach Coordinator. So today, we are here to request approval to apply for Phase II of the EISO grant, which is the HIV Early Intervention and Services Outreach Grant. So this grant was awarded to six local public health departments in 2018, and Deshute County was one of those recipients. For Phase I, which ran for five years since 2018, we were able to partner with other counties like Crook County, Jefferson County, and Warm Springs, were able to provide a lot of HIV and STD prevention, mainly around gonorrhea, chlamydia, and syphilis. We provided testing, linkage to services and outreach, targeted outreach mostly because of the community that we serve. So Deshute County has become eligible again for another phase, which will run for about five and a half years. So this Phase II is going to run from January 1st, 2023, to June 30th, 2028. So this grant has been used and will continue to be used for disease investigation and partner services, mainly for HIV, gonorrhea, and syphilis. Through this grant, we are able to provide testing for HIV and other STDs. We are also able to provide referral services. So clients that are identified in the community who do not, for one reason or another, have a provider, we are able to test and treat them ourselves or refer them to services dependent to other providers to receive services, depending on whether they have insurance or they are able to access these services. We also provide health literacy and education. We provide education on how to prevent new infections in the community and how to promote viral suppression so that they don't reinfect their partners. We also provide access and linkage to care. We ensure that the, each person that is tested or diagnosed with any of these STDs is able to access quality care. We also provide targeted outreach. Some of the clients that we deal with or we work with are in hard-to-reach areas or are struggling with other social determinants of health that prevent them from being able to access care. So we are able to provide outreach to certain places that a regular provider, like a medical doctor or a nurse practitioner, may not be able to access. So we go to drug treatment facilities. We are able to provide treatment to clients in jails. So this EISO generally is part of the bigger vision of HIV Oregon, which is an initiative that is being undertaken by OHA to reduce new HIV infections and also to make sure that people who are living with HIV are not stigmatized and are able to access high-quality care. So that's just a general overview of what this grant has helped us do and will continue to help us do. I'll pass it on to Kathy Christensen to give us more details about the request.
Hi.
Good morning.
Good morning. Kathy, I have a question on the attachment, the analysis. It says for year 2023. Now, does it, according to this chart, it starts 7/1/22. And yet, on the front page, you're saying that it starts January 1st, 23. So are we talking, this chart is the half-year chart for us on our calendar, you know, for our government, our county fiscal policy, is that what it is?
Yes, it's a half-year. Fiscal year 23 is for half-year funding. So the state did really listen to the counties, and they are changing the funding to fiscal year versus calendar year, which we all really appreciate. So the first year is really 18 months of funding.
Well, it doesn't, it's really like, it doesn't show 18 months, though it shows like half a year, I mean, on the chart on the back.
Yeah, so you would add together fiscal year 23 and fiscal year 24 to make an 18-month period.
Right.
They broke it out, but it is actually 18 months within those. So that is considered year one of funding, that 18 months. And then year two starts with fiscal year 25. Does that make sense?
Well, that's, yes, that's not what the chart shows. So, I mean, I just was trying to, okay, understand.
Yeah, so currently, it's in calendar years. So they are changing it to fiscal year, which is why the six months is not, like, is added to the first year.
Right.
Because of when the fiscal year starts.
So the phase.
State's backing up the first year by six months, which makes it an 18-month first year.
Yeah, so Phase Two, or Phase One that we're in currently, that we're in year five, and it ends at the end of this year, December 31st. And so for Phase Two, they're doing the first six months and adding it to the fiscal, the next fiscal year so that we can get on a fiscal year funding cycle.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. So we, this funding has really allowed us to not only put more comprehensive efforts into STD investigation and partner services, but it's also allowed us, the funding, to do a lot of work within the community as far as, you know, doing prevention, doing outreach testing to populations that are disproportionately impacted by STDs. And so we've really been to do, able to do prevention efforts that we haven't been able to do in the past. So it's been a huge benefit to our programming. We, sorry, Rita covered some of the things I had down to cover, so that's great. So we don't really need to apply for this grant because the grant, we are eligible for the funding. But we need to submit a projected five-and-a-half-year budget along with staffing plans so that the state knows what our requirement will be over the funding period. We will need to come back on a yearly basis to get a final budget and submit it to the state for each year of funding. One of the things about this grant is that it only allows for 10% indirect charges, and so we will need help from the county to cover the rest of the indirect cost. But it seems like a small investment for the benefit that we get from the grant. We have, there has been some changes in the funding. We are no longer required to be a tri-county partnership. So as of this year, Deshute County is an EISO-funded program, or funded programming alone. We're not funded tri-county. And that is because the state received some other funding from the CDC to help bolster disease investigation across the state. And so they funded counties that were the original EISO counties with EISO funds, and other counties all received some what's called PE-10 funding or STD funding through the CDC. And so Jefferson County and Crook County are receiving PE-10 funding. We are helping Jefferson County, and they are paying us some of their PE-10 funding so we can support disease investigation in that county because they have a really hard time with staffing. So we have that funding currently, and we're using our nursing staff time, working along with the staff in Jefferson County and Warm Springs to work those cases. And then we also have applied for a COHC grant. But Crook County has, is the one applying for the grant, but will help support some of our staffing time for data and epidemiology.
Kathy, I was wondering, the year from '25 to '26, it's going to jump up your allocation like $95,000. Do you know why the jump is so significant? I mean, why are you allocated such a jump there? Are you guys hiring another person?
No, there's no plans to hire. So that the funding that we're receiving right now, the PE-10 funding from Jefferson County and hopefully the COHC funding is offsetting the first couple of years. We don't, those funding streams only last for so long. And so we're in hopes that both of those will continue after the two-year funding period, but we don't know that at this time. So we're asking for less in the first two years, and then we're asking for the full amount of funding in the other years, but we may not need it based on the other funding streams.
Are these all federal dollars that are going through the state, or does the state have other funds they're putting into this program, do you know?
These are federal dollars.
Yeah, so they're all coming through, through the state, but they're federal efforts at this point.
Yeah.
Well, Dr. Bacho, I think, this is the first time we've seen you in front of us, hasn't it?
Yes.
So thank you so much. We've seen you on Zoom call for two years or whatever it's been now. So thank you very much for joining us and the other staff on this program. So this is exciting, knowing that, you know, these federal dollars are coming down, the state's coordinated. It's good to hear about how the tri-county efforts are working, so there's other funds coming in. And thanks for that clarity on our, basically, it's an implied commitment for general fund to keep this program for the administrative costs. So I know we're in that spot, but we need to know that information, you know? I mean, Deshute County's been, you know, well-funded and a growing place for a long time, but knowing the parts and pieces is going to be important, you know, if things change in the future, which looks like we're maybe in for, you know, some struggling times in the future. But it's exciting knowing that this program's kind of got that five-year runway again.
And for that above 10% indirect support, I'm just trying to figure out where that's going to show up and how we're going to see that. I mean, will that be just a piece of public health's basic general fund request in our budget hearings in a couple of weeks? Or is that going to be a separate, something, you know, separate and independent of that? I may be, I may be looking at Eric and Dan more than you guys, you know, for the kinds of ins and outs of how budget things, how those kinds of budget things work.
Yes, it will need to be part of the bigger ask of county general funds. How that looks, I'm not one of the fiscal people, so I'm not quite sure, but.
I mean, I guess one of the things I'm wondering is whether, like, whether this kind of rises to the level of a special request, or whether this is just part of the general package that we'll see from public health.
So I don't, I'm not sure, I don't think it's going to be part of the special request because this is something that we've been doing already for the past five years. It's always been part of our county general fund. So I'm assuming, I may be wrong, I'm not the expert on this, but in the absence of the financial experts, I would assume that it's going to be part of our general, our county general funds that we request every fiscal year.
Got it. Thank you.
Well, and there's always these little things that, you know, oh yeah, let's do it, let's acknowledge that, and then they all add up to a big number. That's the scary part. So that's what we're going to spend a whole week on in a couple of weeks, really looking at each part and piece of it.
So we, and that's why we want you to be aware of it.
Well, it'll be important to, it'll be helpful to know that, you know, it's always good when we see that kind of like aggregate number, that that's, that doesn't necessarily have a whole bunch of detail underneath it, to have a sense of what some of the pieces are and, you know, critically important services like this that, you know, make up that aggregate number. So, thank you.
I just wondered, do we have a number on the HIV population? I just wondered, do we have a number on the HIV population in Deschutes County today in 2022?
We never know exactly how many folks are living with HIV and I'm sure that there are folks out there that don't know that they have HIV, but of the folks that we know, there's probably close to 200 folks living with HIV and regionally maybe closer to 300. Part of this grant is to really help folks who are out of care, not receiving HIV care, get back into care and get on medications because if you're non-detectable and your viral load, you won't transmit the virus. So that's one of the important keys. You know, projects that we have in this grant. Also, for the first time in a number of years, OHA is starting to see HIV infections go up in the state of Oregon, so we want to get ahead of that here in Deschutes County.
Thank you for that, Kathy.
Yeah.
And information. Any other questions?
No questions. As I say, it's great to see everybody today. Now, this is, it's been a challenging couple of years going down, down the COVID path, but this is kind of one of those core functions that we've, we've done for a long time and we do plan on doing a lot longer in partnership with the federal government and the state funding.
With that, I, so it's, it's not really an application, this is a submission. So with that, I'll move approval to submit for Oregon Health Authority HIV Early Intervention Services and Outreach Funding.
And I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner DePone?
Yes.
And the Chair, Bajra.
Great to see everybody, thank you.
Rita, if you could just look, when you go back to the office, there is a difference of like 86,000 between year 25 and 26. And it looks like other years you have, you know, you have to increase the payroll for a certain amount, but that number seems a bit higher than what's happening. So if you can just let me know what that is, that would be great.
Yeah, absolutely.
I mean, it looks like the other number, you know, it didn't jump up enough and then all of a sudden you jumped up 86,000, so I'm just wondering what's going on.
Yeah, it's a deficit from not knowing whether we are going to get more because the, the previous year, the first two years, that is, we are not accounting for the full cost of the program because we have extra funding from Jefferson County as Kathy mentioned.
Right.
But we are not sure how long we'll have those funds. So to the extent that we know is what we budgeted for. However, we may get those PE 10 fundings beyond fiscal year 2025. So this may not, this, these figures may change, but as of now, we don't know if we are going to get that funding. So it's better to over budget than to under budget, assuming, in case we don't get those funding. But I, we anticipate getting those funding. So if we do get those fundings, these numbers would go down.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, have a great day.
Thank you for joining us. Okay, we have item number seven. Estee is, Owen, Dan is here. Thank you, Dan.
Speaking of money.
Okay, this item was kind of just last minute on the agenda here, so I have some handouts that are not in the agenda currently.
Sure. Okay, okay.
They're all over the place.
Okay.
Could get messy. How many hands?
How are you doing it?
Good, how are you?
Yeah, thank you.
And I want to welcome on our Zoom, I see several people from our community. Yes. Thank you. Yes, welcome, Cassie and Todd.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
If not, no big deal.
Here's two Saving Grace ones.
Oh, there it is.
There we go.
I have two of those. Gotcha, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. Here today, we are here to discuss ARPA allocation of funds, the American Rescue Plan Act. Based on Commissioner direction, we do have two local nonprofits here on our line. One is Saving Grace and one is the Redmond Senior Center. So let's just start out with Saving Grace and they can talk briefly and summarize their proposals and then if there's any questions.
Okay, welcome.
Thank you, good morning, Commissioners. My name is Cassie McLean. I know I've got to meet most of you in person, but I am the Executive Director at Saving Grace. As you probably know, Saving Grace is the only domestic violence and sexual assault agency serving Deschutes County and the entire tri-county area. We have submitted two separate ARPA proposals to you for some critical life-saving services that we have at Saving Grace. Our first proposal was primarily to assist us in compensating our advocates. Our advocates are truly our lifeline. They are the ones that are providing the 24-hour wraparound services to survivors of intimate partner violence and sexual assault 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. Saving Grace is over 40 years old, but actually within the last year, we saw our first decrease in federal funding, which is why we have specifically asked for these positions. Saving Grace has requested funding to support our mental health and case management, specifically our counseling center program. And this is a program where we provide free and confidential counseling to all survivors. You all know what a challenge mental health is here in central Oregon and we oftentimes find survivors facing violence are looking at three to six-month wait lists just to get basic mental health services. We have these services in-house where we're able to provide trauma-informed counseling as well as refer clients to agencies such as Deschutes Behavioral Health, St. Charles to get long-term counseling. As part of our staffing model, we've also requested funding for our weekend advocates. We have seen the need of our weekend advocates increase exponentially since COVID. We are seeing more survivors come to us with more need, quite frankly, as community resources have been tight and as we've seen an escalation of violence. These weekend advocates, first and foremost, are able to continue providing that seven-day-a-week care to survivors in our shelter and to survivors that are calling in from our 24-hour helpline or presenting at St. Charles here in Bend as sexual assault survivors. Unfortunately, this year, we were told that our federal funding that funded our weekend program would be going away, which is why we've included our entire weekend staff on this proposal because we truly see it critical in being able to provide trauma-informed and responsive services to survivors here in Deschutes County. As part of this proposal, we additionally included funding for access to food and access to housing. When survivors come to us, we are trying to help meet their needs so they can really start that journey into safety or they can begin to recover and get their feet underneath them again. This includes providing food in our shelter, food for survivors in motels, food cards for survivors to begin purchasing their own groceries as they're moving into their next phase of life, and food for Mary's Place. This is our court-ordered visitation and exchange program that's housed in the Deschutes County building in partnerships with the county. Finally, as part of this first proposal, you'll see that we requested funding to access housing. Quite frankly, we see access to housing as being one of the biggest barriers in keeping survivors safe. We know what the housing crisis is here in central Oregon and you can imagine, if you have been in an abusive relationship, if you have not had financial control, if you potentially have a rough record history because you've been living with an abuser, being able to have access to housing is extremely challenging. We have had a survivor housing program for the last two years that has been extremely successful. It is funded by the state and we have administered every dollar and every additional dollar that they've ever awarded to us. So you can see on this proposal that we are requesting access to housing for emergency motel stays. This is where sometimes we are housing survivors for just a night or two until we can get them into a safe location, until they are able to work with law enforcement to see that they are safe or until we can get them out of the area. Additionally, it's housing for transitional or bridge housing to long-term housing and 24,000 for our long-term housing program. We spend on average about $180,000 a year in our survivor housing program and these are payments to landlords, these are deposits, sometimes these are back utility payments, but like I said, we have been able to award every single dollar out and on a monthly basis, we are having to pick and choose how we're able to allocate these funds because quite frankly, the need of survivors has surpassed any financial means that we've ever received from the state. So again, this proposal is going to our day-to-day services and the ones that are always here and the ones that we have seen federal decreases in or where we've seen a significant increase in need from survivors in this community. We sent a second proposal in specifically looking at improving our emergency shelter right here in Bend. I think you all know Saving Grace, like I've said, we've been around for about 40 years and we were one of the first six domestic violence shelters in the entire country. Commissioner Adair, I know you've got to visit our shelter and see it firsthand. It is a beautiful place for survivors. It also has not been significantly expanded or updated since the 90s. We know that our population has increased here and again, COVID has really just, we've truly seen an increase in need, an increase of survivors with greater barriers and an increase in violence that survivors are experiencing. So this second proposal specifically asks to work on our shelter in two different ways. It's improving our kitchen so we can have more survivors that have access to food, access to appliances and essentially a kitchen that can support a larger population at our emergency confidential shelter. Additionally, this proposal is asking to convert two of our current offices into additional bedrooms. Part of our long-term strategic plan is building another shelter, most likely here in Deschutes County, but this is a great way at this time where we can add beds, we can add rooms, and this shelter is specifically for survivors that need a confidential shelter due to the severity of violence, due to the lethality that they're facing. So this proposal not only would allow us to add more rooms, add more beds, add a improved and larger kitchen, it will also cover a repair, a pretty vital repair that we have in our shelter. And since we submitted this proposal, we have found out that insurance will not be recovering this repair. Again, an older building that we regularly maintain, but we had a small internal leak that was kind of going through the walls. So part of this project will also cover these expenses, be able to allow us to do this repair at no other cost to the agency. As we are in the end of our fiscal year, we have spent the bulk of our repair budget for this year and again, spent the bulk of our decreased funding trying to keep survivors safe. And so again, this proposal really is looking at access for survivors, food and housing access and improving our shelter, which is the only domestic violence shelter here in Deschutes County.
Great job. I mean, the big picture just got laid out for us.
I'm happy to go into specifics over any of these dollar amounts, over any of the increased need that we've seen from the community or answer any questions that you all have.
I mean, I guess, just for, to start the discussion, I would say that we have seen a substantial increase in domestic violence and, and abuse, intimate partner abuse during the pandemic. And that calls for, you know, an expansion of services and an expansion of support networks for people who are experiencing those things. So I think that this is a very appropriate place for us to be investing some of the American Rescue Plan funds that are specifically intended for us to, you know, specifically intended to help respond to and recover from the pandemic.
So Cassie, when did you find out that the federal funding is what, it was eliminated? It was cut back? What's happened?
Yeah, it was cut back. So specifically, we first found this out this past fiscal year. So as you all know, in 2021, so last fiscal year, we saw a huge increase in funding. Saving Grace specifically got a huge increase of hundreds of thousands of dollars in the coronavirus relief fund. And that we were able to dedicate directly to survivors, directly to ensuring that we were meeting the need of the community. We were informed at the beginning of this fiscal year that VOCA, so this is a federal program, would be seeing a decrease of approximately 30% to domestic violence agencies. Here in Oregon, C V S S D, so the Crime Victim Support Services Department through the state is who administers that. They were able to try to minimize that impact, so we roughly saw about a 10% decrease from our overall funding. But in order to do that, they had to cut our VOCA C program. And VOCA C is a VOCA competitive grant and that is what funded our weekend staff. Additionally, we got no extra dollars to be able to compensate or pay for the increased need. So for example, in years past, if we're just specifically talking about motailing, because you'll see that's kind of a larger item on that budget, historically, we spent about 15 to 25,000 dollars a year in emergency motailing. Last fiscal year, thanks to increased coronavirus relief funds, we spent 67,000 dollars. And this year, just to date, we've spent 50,000 dollars. And again, that's with intent screening, with good stewardship of these dollars. So we went into this fiscal year knowing that we were seeing a decrease. Our board actually approved a budget that was a six-figure deficit. We were about 103, 123,000 dollars in the red because we just knew we could not, we could not provide these life-saving services. Luckily, through fundraising efforts, we've been able to close that gap. But what we are continuing to see is that the need from the community is not slowing down. The costs of services here in Deschutes County specifically are, like I kind of mentioned, when survivors are coming to us, it seems that they have a greater need or maybe they had family support or community support before and that's just not there. So we knew about this cut this fiscal year and we are just beginning to hear about if we will see any increases next fiscal year, but we did not have any increased funding this fiscal year, only a decrease in that VOCA funding from the federal government that's administered by the state.
So Cassie, you just said you spent 67,000 in 2021 on motel stays and now you're talking through May 4th, how much have you spent this year then? I didn't quite catch-
49,118 dollars.
Oh, I'm sorry, cut out a-
From our last report.
How much?
49,118 dollars.
Okay, so you've spent 50,000 almost through, not even five months.
Yes, ma'am.
Wow.
Yeah, it, it, you know, that emergency motailing piece is truly critical. Really what we see in emergency motailing, the primary place of what we're using there is in partnership with the Deschutes, or not Deschutes, Bend and Redmond Police. So some of you know, we have a lethality assessment program. This is where law enforcement has a screening anytime they come to a DV case and where they are screening to see if somebody has a high risk of dying from violence. I can speak anecdotally, we used to be busy if we had three of those cases a month. We had a weekend just a few months ago where we had six high lethality cases come in in just the matter of a weekend. And so this is where we're really seeing to put people in there. We have had a bit of a decrease, Patty, this year, mostly because we didn't have those additional coronavirus relief funds and we've really had to kind of look at our screening process. But again, even changing our screening process, ensuring that we're not just kind of opening the gates, we have had such a high need, we spent our entire planned motailing budget in just over a quarter. So that community need is great and quite honestly, we only see it increasing here in Deschutes County.
I know, it's some of the unintended consequences of what was happening and yes, people truly, some relationships truly suffered. And, you know, if you're telling me you had- And, um, you know, if you're telling me you had six cases in one weekend that you received through the police from either Bend or Redmond, yeah, that's really, oh my gosh, and yet those, and those people have to be put somewhere where they're, they're safe too. Is that what you're saying?
Exactly. So what happens is we have a direct line with law enforcement. They call us, um, we really ask very little questions because they've been screened in. We get them out of the area because oftentimes either, um, abuser has been arrested, but we know abuser will be released typically within 24 hours or abuser fled. Um, and so we're immediately getting them somewhere safe, um, somewhere confidential. Additionally, we oftentimes have folks who are calling our helpline, um, and they may be screening in into our confidential shelter or they may be screening in for us to help them get out of the, out of the area. We find in a trauma-informed model though, again, in a sheltering community living, it's not ideal to bring somebody who's in high trauma in the middle of the night, you know? And so we'll get those folks immediately into a motel, assess them, assess are they a fit for shelter? For example, if they're such high risk that it could compromise the other survivors living there, we might not bring them in. Um, but yes, the need is great, um, and we're really seeing, um, again, just with the cost in Deschutes County and the need from the community that we truly can't have enough motoring funds because it's typically that first emergency interaction, that first intervention, um, and that need to have a safe place to go immediately. That's that first step for folks getting out of an abusive relationship.
I know, I just got a mailer from your group and with an envelope. So I'm sure you mailed other people those envelopes and yes.
Cassie, I did want to ask about your, your fundraising efforts and it, it sounds like, I mean, you, you've, um, you're, you're, you're facing increasing demand, increasing costs, uh, reduction in federal, you know, federal support and you've been able to respond to some degree with increased fundraising. Um, are there, are there things that it's easier to fundraise for than others? Uh, like, I, I mean, you have, it's a, uh, you know, kind of looking at, I'm, I'm looking at that kind of three or four pieces, uh, between your, your, your two proposals that I, I, are there components of, of those services or those facilities, um, or those resources that, uh, you know, it, it's, it's, it's easier for, um, you know, individual fundraised, you know, individual donors to kind of, um, latch onto and, and then say like, yeah, I'll, I'll step up on that. Um, and are there things that are harder, um, to, to fundraise for?
Absolutely. That's a great, um, question, Commissioner Chang. So, um, when it comes to fundraising, it can be specifically challenging, um, to essentially fundraise, um, we find for staff compensation, um, just because that's constantly a moving target, folks oftentimes want money to go directly to services, which we desperately need. Um, but getting financial support for staff compensation can be challenging, especially staff compensation that we need in order to continue to be competitive, um, and an employer of choice here in central Oregon. You know, um, from what we paid our advocates, you could certainly get a job at your local taco time, you know, um, getting the same amount of payment and not doing high trauma, high, um, high-risk work. So that is particularly a challenge for us. However, Commissioner Chang, I would say what is really the biggest challenge for us is being able to, um, increase our fundraising efforts at the same rate that we're seeing the increase of need in the community. So specifically this fiscal year, like I shared, we walked into it with about $123,000 deficit, um, through, uh, additional foundation and grant writing support, we've been able to kind of close that gap and it looks like we will be ending in the black. However, as our board has been looking at next fiscal year and, um, first of all, meeting the continual need that we see, continuing to provide the services and continuing to compensate our staff in what I would just say is a marginally appropriate way. Um, if we were able to prioritize everything, we are looking at a $340,000 deficit for next fiscal year. Again, that is not increasing, that's not adding new programs, that's truly meeting the community need and truly giving, um, uh, modest, uh, increases to our staff. And so while our development team was able to close that gap of $123,000, um, it's unclear of how quickly we will able to get, uh, the community and other funders to close a gap of $350,000. Um, luckily Saving Grace, we've been around a long time. We are very financially heavy, or not financially heavy, financially sound, I should say, um, and we have healthy reserves. We always have six months and so our board has, um, recommended that we continue forward with all of our priorities at this time, looking at a worst-case scenario of having a $340,000 deficit next year because again, we're talking about life-saving services and we're talking about basic compensation to incredibly trained staff who are very hard to recruit in this market. So while that staff piece is hard, really fundraising at the rate of the need is what is hardest for us, Commissioner.
Got it. Thank you. Given what we've heard about, uh, the, the, the challenges of fundraising, um, to, to support basic staffing, I, um, I would like to prioritize that, you know, if we, if, uh, if we're going to fund any pieces of, of these proposals, and I, I hope we will, uh, that at minimum we cover the, uh, the, um, the staffing costs under mental health and case management for, uh, $263,453. And then maybe indirect on top of that. But, you know, I, I certainly see the argument for, uh, some of the other components here. Um, uh, you know, uh, you know, immediate, um, nutritional and, um, you know, uh, uh, housing support and also, um, long-term for an investment in the facilities, uh, at, at the Saving Grace Shelter to, to better be able to, you know, to be able to expand services, essentially.
Cassie, are you on a 1231 year end?
No, we, we go 7-1 to 631.
Okay, that's what I was wondering, because you know that you're covered through this year, but your projected deficit is 340,000 for next year?
Yes, starting on 7-1 2022. That's our predict, our predicted deficit. And again, that's not increasing, that's not adding a new program, that's really meeting the community need and continuing to compensate our existing staffing structure at an appropriate, at an appropriate, um, I would even say nonprofit rate.
So I'm, uh, I'm excited to be able to, you know, get you some resources right now. You know, we'll, we'll work through what, what the number's going to be, right? It looks like we're going to do it here pretty quick, so, uh, but as I say, the big picture is these are ARPA dollars, one-time dollars from the federal government. So it looks like we're going to be able to give you a boost of something which may even really, you know, pave the way for this next year. Uh, so then I just think of the future, you know? I know that there's other revenue sources, um, as a, I don't know, uh, you know, the, um, the different ways you get dollars from our local community, but, uh, uh, yeah, this, this will be a bump, you know? I'm excited to be able to know that we can do this at this point in time, I guess is my message.
But Cassie, the scary thing is that these, these are, these are the end of our ARPA funds and the economy out there, you know, it, it doesn't, the inflation is, is really impactful. Um, you know, the GDP number went down the first quarter. If we get another quarter, that's, that means we're going to be going into a recession. So it's really, um, it's, it's frightening to see what you may be dealing with, even with some of our help, what is it you can do and especially if there's that need. So, yeah, I mean, I feel like-
I can imagine.
Your board is in a, you know, the fact that they approved your budget with a deficit of 123,000 and you've made that gap up, that's, that's outstanding, but if the federal funding is really going down, what is it you're going to do?
Yeah, you know, the good news for us, Commissioner Adair, is, you know, recently, um, the Oregon, uh, Oregon had a special session. There are a number of things that will be coming our way. However, uh, federal funding is slow. Um, it's quite slow until we see those dollars. We have started to get word that there will be a VOCA C bridge grant, um, that could be coming our way. Again, we don't know what that time period would be, what the biennium is. Um, I'm also hopeful because the state, the state passed other legislation about funding DV organizations in general. So what I think you see here is it gives us a cushion. It gives us time to, uh, meet the need and to use when those federal dollars do come in to, um, spread it out over larger years. Again, um, I've done, uh, nonprofit finances for the bulk of my career and, and Commissioner Adair, you know, I previously worked for the Red Cross where I managed our finances up and down the West Coast. Um, this has been the hardest budget year that I've ever seen. However, really kind of what Saving Grace is asking for is help us meet the need right now so our team can continue to, um, close that gap. I have no hesitancy, um, in how we move forward and again, Saving Grace has very healthy reserves, but this kind of helps us as we go into this next fiscal year and we wait for some of the federal and state legislation that has passed, that should bring more dollars our way, but unfortunately, um, just can't come soon enough.
So yeah, before we ready to talk about kind of honing in on, on the investment here, I, I'm basically supportive of the whole package minus maybe access to food, which is the smallest line item there, knowing that that, you know, community support will come when needed in, in, in areas that are, you know, needed.
Are you talking the 147 and the 396 minus?
Uh, are we looking?
No, there's two asks here.
On the first proposal-
Yeah, so I'm looking at the page.
11,800.
Yep, 11,800, yeah.
Okay. I, I would support, uh-
Which is just, almost the whole ask.
Yeah.
On this page, is there another capital ask, I guess? Let's get clear.
Well, there's, I mean, there's two-
Yeah, so what's-
Yeah, there's a hundred and, almost 150,000.
So now I'm not seeing that in front of me.
It's on this other letter. There's the second letter.
Oh, maybe I handed off the second letter. Maybe that's what happened here.
Yes.
That would happen? Oh, good, I'm glad we're on the same page now, okay.
We've got two copies of the second letter, so if you-
Yep.
Um, I don't know, I, I, I really want to be careful with our allocation and I don't really feel that we need to, um, cover indirect administrative costs. I don't know, I just, that's, that's another 35,000.
One of my thoughts there is this is a great opportunity to do that right now with ARPA dollars, knowing that that's going to be hard to do ever, ever again. You know, this is extra dollars right now. So that, I, I mean, I understand your concern, but that's, I was thinking the other way. Like, if we can do it, maybe we should do it right now.
And Commissioner DeBong-
You can see us negotiating up here.
He answered, uh, Commissioner Chang's question better. You know, the, the administrative costs, we're talking about our basic infrastructure of our office that, um, administers all these funds, our basic staff only at a 10% rate. So it's at a very, very small, um, actual impact as to what it is to our organization, but that line is very high. Oftentimes, federal funding can't cover that at all, um, and what we use that for are the general dollars that come in through our fundraising efforts. However, when we're talking about closing a gap of $340,000 roughly, you know, we want to put every penny in the hands of survivors. Um, and so knowing that those federal dollars can't oftentimes fund that or ever fund that administrative support, um, again, we're not talking about bells and whistles, you know? We're talking about the people, um, who are managing the programs, who are managing the grants. So I certainly echo what you're saying. It is kind of a nice way where there's not as many limitations on this, but again, I want to recognize we're asking, we're asking you all for a lot and for us, we're really asking to keep the lights on and the doors open and a continuation of just the basic community need.
So the $340,000 deficit, does that include, you're actually doing this remodel then? With the, um-
It actually does not include the remodel in any way. No, that's just to cover our weekend staff that we know are going away and the lack of funding for our counseling center program manager, uh, our prevention program that is no longer receiving any, um, funding from the state at this time, as well as a basic comp adjustment, um, that we have to kind of, um, deal with, uh, decades of underpaying our staff and the inflation that we're seeing here. So no, it does not include the shelter remodel in any way, um, as part of that deficit. If that was not approved through the county, that would probably be waiting until we have a bit more of a stabilization of our basic services, um, and ensuring that we can meet that need of the community.
But then Cassie, does the, the first proposal, um, for, uh, um, for, uh, weekend advocates and housing and food, um, support, that does intersect some with the 340 deficit?
100%. You would essentially be closing a big portion of the gap for us and enabling our team to kind of look at the longer, um, more sustainable fundraising models that would fund us into years previous, into years, um, after this next fiscal year.
So Cassie, I'm wondering, what are you guys allocating for, um, because of your year-end, uh, emergency motel stays for this next year then? What, what's the number on your, um, your pro, projected budget for next year? If you've already spent 49,000?
Our budget for this year is- Yeah, that's a great question, Commissioner Adair. It's, um, 60,000 for our next year is what we're looking at budget-wise. Of course, we would be utilizing funds from other resources that we're hoping come in. And again, that's just, um, I don't even think that's, uh, as high as we would like it to be, knowing that we spent over $67,000 last year when we had that additional funding, but projecting 60,000 for next year because again, despite our best efforts to ensure that our screening process and that we're truly only motoring, the folks that are in desperate need of it, um, we're still seeing that we're spending at that rate. So 60,000 for next fiscal year.
Because hotel rooms have really gone up. I think they've gone up like 23%. I, I believe I saw that percentage somewhere recently. Um, truly, they're more expensive and yeah, it, just putting 60,000 in your budget, truly, if you've spent 49,000 for the first, you know, five months of this year, that's probably not going to cut it, is it? You're going to be short, I would think, if, unless things-
Absolutely. And Commissioner Adair, that's the hard thing that our staff have to do on a daily basis, you know? Um, and we've seen the need for decades be more than what our funding requirements are. And so our trained advocates have to make hard decisions about what will keep somebody safe and how do we steward that funding? So it's not anything that we are, um, unaccustomed to. These are hard decisions that we have to make, but again, with the increased need and like you spoke to, the increased cost, um, we're hoping to have more resources so we don't have to make as many of those late-night decisions, um, specifically when it's talking about a life or death matter. You know, for us, we always choose the survivor and we always choose keeping them safe, but you're, you're absolutely right. It's just the tip of the iceberg, um, and really just the tip of the community need here in Deschutes County.
So, so what if we funded their, their projected deficit, the 340? Would that give them enough to go?
So we're referring to the, the, the one ask for case management, housing and everything? And, uh, and you're, you're just proposing kind of the round number up?
Well, well, that's what she said her deficit is and I-
But I'm just pointing out, I'm, I'm supportive of that. Yeah, it's kind of a good win.
I, I, I'd advocate for, uh, for more. This is, you know, through the course of, um, allocating out American Rescue Plan funds, we have, we have, um, seen, identified, explored a number of, um, real stress points in our community, um, and, um, made some really substantial investments in, in many of them. I, I feel like this is an area where we haven't, you know, this is substantial, um, this is a place where, you know, the pandemic has really, uh, wreaked havoc in our community and that we haven't really made any investments in this area a, as of yet. So I, I, I understand that we are getting towards the end of our American Rescue Plan funds, but because this is a, like a whole area that we have not, um, made any investments yet, I, I, I do think that a larger number is appropriate and I, I could, maybe I would, you know, put forward, uh, you know, like pitch, uh, you know, uh, another idea which would be to, um, allocate $450,000, uh, which given the, you know, given, given all the moving parts in Saving Grace's both revenue and fundraising and expenses, um, and like a, a lot of things can, being contingent right now, that they could, uh, they could use for any of the stated purposes across these two proposals, kind of based on, based on the way that the, the year rolls out.
And, uh, Commissioners, I would, I would just say if, if there isn't a, um, consensus on, on the full ask here, uh, that, that is one way to do it is just is there a flat number that everyone can agree on in terms of funding? And then I have all the confidence that, uh, Cassie and Saving Grace, we could work together for, uh, to break it out between food, housing and personnel services for- to break it out between food, housing and personnel services for mental health and care coordination, whatever their needs are that are ARPA eligible, if that's something you'd like to do as well.
If I could interject as well, that, that actually suits our changing finances from the federal government quite well, because that gives us the ability, if tomorrow we hear that we do have an increase of these voca bridge dollars that we have to be able to use in only one way. And that gives us the ability to allocate, like you said, Commissioner Ching, anything on this to do those repairs, to look at really where the need is and to kind of close those gaps. And, and as I know I've stated, and I know none of you are denying, you know, the need is so great. Here in Deschutes County, we used to see about an average of one lethality due to domestic violence a year. Since COVID, we're looking at closer to an average of three here, right here in Deschutes County. So again, we're talking about basic services, basic confidential expansion of our shelter and basic case management and resources to keep just a grip on the current community need.
Yeah, I mean, an increase in lethality is, is really sobering. But I mean, you know, even beyond that, just the amount of, of suffering, dislocation, trauma, you know, very long-term impacts on families' lives is, it's a real concern. And if we can, you know, prevent people's lives from spiraling into a very bad place, that is an extremely important place to make some investments, in my opinion.
So Cassie, are you saying that all these, these costs, the personnel costs, are not in that budget of the 340,000 or are they in your budget?
They are in our budget.
They are?
The only thing not in our budget are the capital improvements to our shelter. Everything else that is listed out in our request to you is in our current budget.
Okay, so you've got the counseling rent, the 33,000, that's there, all those costs.
We do.
And you need four new laptops, all that?
Yes, ma'am. All of that is in there. What they doesn't have is a dedicated funding source. So pre, in years past, we were funded our counseling center through CDBG. And so at this time, the costs and the staff places that you're seeing are places where we do not have any allocated federal or state grant dollars. So there are services that we're committed to keeping, but there is no direct revenue stream to fund those as we've had in years past.
I'm, I'm supportive of the 450. I was just waiting for Commissioner Adair to see if she was ready to go somewhere here.
No, I was adding up, you know, I came up with like 474,000, but.
So you're talking more then?
No, no. But I really, I, I feel like there has to be, I mean, I realize this is Deschutes County and it is truly one of the unintended consequences. I mean, I saw it, I saw it with my Facebook friends. People were drinking too much, what was happening during COVID? You know, you're supposed to stay home. And truly, that wasn't healthy for a lot of marriages. I heard a lot of marriages that really didn't survive that, all that on relationships. And I'm sure, Cassie, that you've, you've been the person that's been there for those. So no, okay, so the 450. All right. And hopefully, truly, if the federal funding does not come through, it's, it's going to have to be, it's really frightening. The state's going to have to pick it up, aren't they?
So to put it on the minutes, I will make a motion to support Saving Grace in their multiple asks in the, in the bulk amount of $450,000 from ARPA funds.
Second.
Any more discussion?
Great job. Congratulations. You can see we're digesting it as we're presenting it, but you were ready on all fronts about your needs. So thank you so much.
It must have been your Red Cross training.
For your support. We truly appreciate you and we'd love to have you over for a tour anytime. But thank you so much for your support.
We haven't voted yet, Cassie.
We're half a step away.
Yeah, truly. Okay, Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
Mr. Chang? And the Chair of the Chair.
There we go.
And Cassie.
Now, thank you.
Cassie, thank you for the incredibly important work that your, your organization does for our community.
Yep, and the long history of it too. Thank you.
Since 1977. So yes, thank you, Cassie. It sounds like it's the most demanding it's ever been too, isn't it? Or maybe not?
That's absolutely right.
I don't know. In 2009, I believe there were, Deschutes County, I think, had a lot of traumatic experiences then too with the recession. So anyway, well, good luck. We will see you soon, I'm sure. And people, send in your envelopes.
Here we go.
Yes, make your donations. So I know Todd was on?
Yeah, and I'm cognizant that we're running up on the executive session. There's Todd Dickerson, the Executive Director of the Redmond Senior Center. Just real quick, before we get there, if you review his requests, there's, there's two requests here. One is for 80,000 for a 50-plus needs assessment. And the Finance Department will need to continue to look into the eligibility of this request and we'll reach out to Mr. Dickerson. And, and I'm happy to hear about it here as well, but we'll need to really look into that to make sure it's ARPA eligible. But then there is also the commercial kitchen renovation for 250,000, which we have deemed as, as ARPA eligible, so.
Thank you, Dan.
Yeah.
Yes. I know Todd's going to, aren't you going to run 100 miles or something, Todd?
Well, I will if we raise enough money to do so, yes.
There we go.
Well, we've got to have you do that.
So Cassie's a hard act to follow.
Uh huh.
But just from Redmond Senior Center, if there's anything we can ever do, depending on the conversation we're just about ready to have, to support them in the food side of things, we would 100% like to be a part of that. That's what we do here is feed people. And I've always said, since I joined in January, if we're going to go broke, we're going to go broke feeding folks. And, and so I'm not sure if she's still listening, but I'll reach out to her and have that conversation. So happy to have, to be here today. You know, I, I started here in January. I'm a Redmond kid. I'm a unicorn in this community. I went to Redmond Schools K through 12. You're not going to find that many of us that are, that are still around and kicking. And, and I'm, as the Executive Director of the Redmond Senior Center, I'm here to support the, the folks that raised me. Not a day goes by that I don't see a mom or dad of a, of a friend I went to school with come through our doors. And the needs that we have here are, are great. And, and obviously, if you're going to pick out a demographic that COVID worked over pretty well, it's our senior community. And this place was shuttered for a couple of years, managing to, to do the Meals on Wheels program during that time. I know that we've got a couple of things on the table and the needs assessment. I'm not, I'm not certain where that fits in. I'll give you a brief overview of, of why that's on the table. So Redmond as a whole, the population is 25%, 50 and older, which is now considered in that senior demographic soon to be 35% by 2025. All of the growth that you've seen in this community, there's hardly been a gain in the student population. So the folks that are coming here are in that demographic. And we don't know what their needs are. It's been 35 years since there's been a comprehensive needs assessment for our older adult community. And we want to make sure that we're not just making stuff up and starting programs because we think it sounds fun and exciting when we actually need other things. And our, the, the, the assessment is on the table, goes beyond just health. It's going to be a very broad and deep dive into what those needs are within our community. And I think that would, will help all of the municipalities and organizations within our region to know what's going on. So I will leave that at that because as you mentioned, it, it may not be fitting for what's, what's going on. But I will, I would like to talk specifically about our kitchen remodel and what we're trying to accomplish here. So the kitchen, which we work out of right now, is 30 years old. And I don't know, it works at about 50% capacity in terms of what actually works. So you can imagine cooking dinner for your family with a hot plate and a microwave. That's what we're kind of doing every day. We, we send out 120 meals a day, between Meals on Wheels and our home delivery service, as well as feeding upwards of 50 folks a day in our center. All done with one full-time chef, couple of part-time folks and a whole bunch of stuff that doesn't work. And we are, unlike many, many, many senior centers across the country, we are full 501(c)(3). We get $0 that come to us. They're not part of a city budget, county budget, state budget. Every dollar that we expend out of this place is a dollar that we raise through the community, through foundational grants, through the grants of the county, from the city, things like that. So everything that we do is full 501(c)(3). We are not part of the city budget. We're also not funded by Council on Aging. We are a contractor for that organization. We handle the Greater Redmond area Meals on Wheels. Now, that does mean we do get federal funding behind that at $5 a meal for everything that, that goes out the door for qualified Meals on Wheels recipients. Barely, a little bit stringent as to what will qualify for Meals on Wheels as far as age, as far as financial status, have to be homebound, things like that. During the COVID pandemic, the board and the staff over here decided that no one was going to go hungry on our watch. And so we developed our own program to, to deliver meals to folks that don't qualify for Meals on Wheels. So if you can imagine, it's, we get $5 for every meal we send out from Council on Aging. It's costing us about 10 bucks to send that meal out. And, and with inflation, as we've been, as I heard and you visited, it's, it's creeping up, right? The cost of milk is not what the cost of milk was a year ago. So we're doing all of this on antiquated and non-functional equipment. What we understand and know is that if we have the ability, we have the kitchen in place, we have the staff in place, we could triple, quadruple the amount of meals that went out every day and probably just be barely scratching the surface of the need that is in place. We know that there are way more needs, as Cassie just said, and any nonprofit that's ever going to sit in front of you is going to say that need is always outpacing our ability to keep up. It just is. I know for a fact that there are folks that we deliver to, that that is their nutrition for the day. And I also know that it is their socialization for the day. And, and, and I, and I know for a fact, just because we've had anecdotally some things happening the last couple of weeks, that, that our Meals on Wheels drivers can literally be the difference in life or death. Because a lot of those folks see nobody else but our Meals on Wheels drivers. They get to know them, they get to understand who they are and how they feel from day to day. And they're able to make those calls that need to be made at the time that they need to be made. I, I know for a fact that there are people that are still here today because our Meals on Wheels drivers said, I'm not sure that they're feeling very well. What should we do? Move forward. So, you know, that, that's our big, big, big picture. We, we just come out of this pandemic. We opened up in, in August. I started in January. We run a really, really lean operation here. I'm full-time. I've got a, a full-time office manager and a full-time chef and some part-time folks. We never want to, we never want to be, you know, staff-heavy in what we're trying to accomplish. The backbone of what we do is, is feed the folks in our community. There are 20 to 30 folks that come to our center every day. And again, I know that this is the socialization that, that they get. One that's, one thing that's really important to understand about the, the population growth, we have a lot of, as I said, seniors moving in here. A lot of times that means they're coming alone. So they don't have son, daughter, whatever, to call to come help. And so we, we become that de facto in this situation. So you, I think, Mr. Chang, you, you asked Cassie, what are those hard dollars to go raise? I don't want to go ask the community to fund a kitchen remodel when I'm asking them to make sure that our doors are open, our, our folks are fed and the programs that we build are impacting what we're trying to accomplish. So we're looking for, for creative opportunities to, to build this kitchen out in such a way that we can serve more folks, we can be more efficient and we can be a community asset, like I just mentioned about Cassie. We have the ability to feed folks. The Bethlehem Man has just opened up here. And I've already talked about, if you are, if you're in trouble, we got frozen meals. How can we help? The other thing about this, it's, that's really unique is we have an opportunity with this. It's the whole give a man a fish, teach a man a fish, right? If, if we build this kitchen right, it is a potential revenue source for the Redmond Senior Center. Because all these food carts that are in town and all these other places that need commercial kitchens to do the work that they, that they need to do can rent our space and begin to offset some of the funding that we need to run this place on a day-to-day basis. And we really, really are working at very low capacity. Our chef is amazing and what he does with what he has blows my mind. But we're, we're barely able to keep up with what we have. We recognize that there's need for breakfast opportunities and dinner opportunities and, and other ways to feed the community. And we're just not able to keep up with that. So as I said, we're not funded by the city at all. We're not on their budget. We're not funded by Council on Aging or anything else. The city has, has, this is a city building in which we, we operate. And so they have put up some money, $250,000 towards this, this kitchen build-out. I really wish that would cover it, but if anybody's gotten a bid on anything from a construction standpoint in the last few months, you know that, that things are going up. Also, the fact is it's 30 years old and you recognize as soon as I pop a hole in a sheet rock, we're going to find a code violation that we're going to have to bring everything up, up to speed on. So currently, as we look at the, the budget that's in place and the quotes that have come in, we're looking at 280 to $300,000 just in equipment before we turn to ranch. The first couple of quotes that have come in are in the 150 to $200,000 range to install anything. And of course, that is assuming everything goes as planned. In which, if you've ever done a remodel of an old building, you know, none of that's ever going to happen. So we're just coming today to, to say, look, we, we have an opportunity to make a tremendous impact, not only in what we do, but in the community. We want to be a community resource. I know of two other commercial kitchens really in this community in Redmond, both about half the size of, of what we have now. And it's just not feeding, fitting the need. And as we know, when we, when we grow this population from, you know, 25 to 35% over the next three to five years, the need is going to continue to, to, to grow. And we just want to be able to do what we do really well and impact those folks that need, that need the nutrition and, and get it out in a timely manner. The kitchen that we're working to build will be safer. The food will get out. There's always health issues that we've got to make sure we're handling. We, we are delivering the meals now cold, just because it's impossible to make sure that they get their warmth. Some of the equipment that we have in place will take that, that cooked food from, from cooked to chilled in much, much faster, much safer way. So we, we lose any concern of, of any illness that might come from that. We take that really, really seriously. Obviously, we're, we're feeding the seniors of our population and, and we believe they deserve the best. And that's what we're trying to create.
Todd, I'm really excited to hear though, you're saying that possibly some of those food trucks could use your kitchen, because I know someone who has that for a business in Bend and they are incredibly successful with that. You know, if you could share the space and truly that might really help your bottom line more than even like the bottle drop program that I was telling you.
Yeah, 100%. You know, I've run some rough numbers on this, on this. And if we have the kitchen that we're trying to put together, I mean, this could be a six-figure income stream for us with, with all of the stuff that's going on. I've been in touch with COCC as well about, you know, holding classes in this space instead of having to go all the way up to the hill. Redmond is growing in, in such a way that, that we can use that. Anybody who gets a loan to have a food cart in this community has to, has to put forth that they've got the commercial kitchen to work at. Ours is not that space right now. But we, you know, we're closed by three on a normal day. And so anytime, and we're usually done feeding by one or two o'clock. So from two o'clock on, this space is rentable, which is revenue generation. And that was one of the things I was tasked with, with as I came on is unique ways to fund the center. I mean, look, I, I've been a nonprofit executive for 25 years. And I know the things that are easier, easier to fund in the community. Kids are one of them. Currently, seniors are not. So any way that we can find unique ways to fund what we're trying to accomplish, that's what we're doing. And. what we're doing. And Patty, you mentioned it, yes, I put a challenge on the table as soon as I walked in the door, which ends at the end of the month of May. I'm trying to raise $100,000 from the community, and for every $1,000 that we raise, I'm going to run a mile consecutively. I'm not sure why I decided to do that, other than the place deserves it and we needed to jumpstart some things. And I need to lose some weight, so why not, right?
Oh, it sounds like a wonderful idea.
That's on the table, and we're about halfway there, which is great news, right?
That's amazing.
But I did not want to saddle myself, my board, and the community with, though it is desperately needed. If you could see what we're working with, we've got a steamer, we've got one oven, we've got a warmer. We don't have a flat top that works. We don't have a grill that is functional. It's truly an amazing feat to see what happens here every day with Jose and his team to send out 120-plus meals every day.
Well, I just see the food trucks expanding everywhere in Redmond, and so I just, I really think we've got to get your kitchen done, and truly, that is such an operation that could be really beneficial to your bottom line for all the things that you want to do. So I'm really, I'm happy to request, to do your request of the $250,000. I don't know, what do you think, Commissioner Devon?
I support that also. You know, there's the assessment request also, and let's stand by.
We can't do that one because that one.
There you go. Making sure we're on the same page.
Yes, yes.
I'm supportive as well of the commercial kitchen request. I do have, I'd like to ask some questions about partnerships and relationships. Todd, when you mentioned, you know, you've emphasized a couple of times that you're not a part of the city budget, but it sounds, I mean, I think I also heard you say that many senior centers are. So I'm just curious about that, kind of, you know, nationally or in the state or in the region, you know, do, you know, is that a typical thing that a city or a local government is a kind of partner or kind of like core funder for senior centers? Can you speak to that a little bit?
Yeah, yeah, thank you, Mr. Cheng, certainly. So a great example is what you have going in Bend, right? The Lakesburg Community Center is part of the city budget, and that's a senior center as well, right? And of course, one of the things you see over and over is you have a senior center that turns to a community center, and then you start another senior center because the seniors stop coming. On a pretty regular basis, because we have so many transplants, people will come in and say, "Well, we did this in our senior center, and it was extravagant." And I would say, do you know if you're part of the city budget? And their answer is, well, yeah, it's part of the city program. So anecdotally, you can look up Lebanon Senior Center, they are part of the city budget. Lake Oswego, part of the city budget. I don't have percentage-wise what we're talking about, but I would bet the large majority of senior centers in decently-sized communities are actually part of the city, even run and operated by Lebanon. If you look up Lebanon Senior Center over Lebanon, Oregon, you go to the city of Lebanon first to find the senior center, okay? In central Oregon, Bend is probably the only one that is that way, but Oregon is pretty heavy with senior centers that are actually just a function of that. And we've had those communications that, there's a lot of nonprofits in Redmond alone that are doing the work, that some of the city activities should be done. Park Rec is one of them, we're one of them. From a livability standpoint, you want...
But you are in a Redmond City building, though. Do they maintain it? Did he freeze?
He's frozen.
Uh-oh, Todd, you froze. Okay, should I send him a text and ask him to re-join or something?
I mean, I...
There he is. I'm back?
Yes, you're back.
There you go.
I had to run to the bathroom real quick, sorry. So yes, I wish I had the percentages for you, Commissioner Cheng, but by and large, from what I'm hearing, again, I'm new here in terms of understanding some of this stuff. January is when I showed up. But I understand a fairly heavy majority of senior centers across the country either started as such or have been moved and adopted into a city budget or a state budget or county that are, and it gives obviously more opportunity to build programs out, and that's what we're working on. That's what I'm trying to do from the community standpoint, is build program to make sure that our seniors have everything that they need. Ultimately, I won't bore you with my elevator speech, but ultimately, what I want is if you're a senior in Redmond and you have an issue, you have one number to call, you start with us. I might not be able to fix it that moment, but I'm going to find somebody who can. I'm going to give you, and this isn't a pat on my back, but I'm going to give you a great example of what just happened and what we need in our community. My daughter called me last week. Her dad had just passed the week before, and she was helping her mom clean out her home, and they needed to move some beds, and she couldn't find anybody to help move some beds. So my son and I went over on Friday afternoon, and we moved the beds around, right? And that's the sort of stuff we want to be able to build here. That's the stuff that I think our community will fund and get excited to do, and I don't want to burden them outside of that, you know, for ovens and sinks, right?
Yeah, thank you. So the other kind of partnership relationship I wanted to understand more about was your relationship to the Council on Aging. So we made it another commercial kitchen investment, you know, in their large central facility in Bend. So did they, is there no flow of food from that central location to, you know, to the Redmond Senior Center to support meals there? Or is there some, you know, like, did they help with some of the need or some of the load?
Zero. So Council on Aging currently, as I understand it, does operate Meals on Wheels for Sisters, Lapine, and I believe Bend, which isn't actually even part of the senior center. We are the contractor for Council on Aging. They're the AAA for the area. There is no meal, nothing that comes out of that commercial kitchen that, I don't know it's finished or what, nothing that comes out of that kitchen comes to us at all.
Okay. Yeah, I think there may even be support for, you know, broader than Deschutes County across the tri-county region, but it's helpful to understand that, you know, the Redmond Senior Center is maybe, maybe Redmond is a big enough community that Council on Aging doesn't provide that support there.
And we've always done it. And so I think what happened certainly in Sisters, I think they lost whoever they were working with, and they were unable to do so. I think Lapine was in a similar situation. They were unable to, they had the kitchen available. We are fortunate in that we do have a kitchen here that we're able to do that. It also gives us honestly an opportunity, if we have the proper kitchen, you know, we could help, we could be the resource for Madras, we could be the resource for Pringle, we could be the Meals on Wheels distributor for those places who are struggling. I think at one point, Lapine was buying them from a restaurant, right? So I think, given this opportunity and the bandwidth, I watch the operation all the time, and I know that getting what we send out as it is is tough, but with a new kitchen that functions really well, suddenly, we can charge Madras $5 a meal and deliver to them in Pringle and anywhere else that we can connect. And it gives us the opportunity, as you talk about partnerships, right? There are organizations here, there are a number of homeless-supporting organizations here that could use our kitchen, whether it be that we prepare meals in advance and have them frozen and ready for delivery, or they come in after shift because they are inundated and they're behind schedule. There are ways that this kitchen will service community above and beyond places that I've even thought about. I do also know that the chef that we have is classically trained out of Cuba, and he is lights-out. If I was having a wedding tomorrow, I would hire him to cater, right? And so we can do some things, again, when we talk about generating revenue for the senior center outside of me asking Tom and Joe and Sally to give me $100, then we can put on dinners. We can do breakfast burritos for the community. We can do some things to generate revenue to support the efforts that we're doing.
Great.
Great, is there a motion?
I will move support of the ask for a commercial kitchen renovation in the amount of $250,000 from ARPA funds for the Redmond Senior Center.
Second.
Any further discussion? Commissioner Devon?
I'd just say, great job today. You almost stayed up with Cassie there, especially with some of the, I mean, these are true needy stories in our community, so we shouldn't make light of it, but great job, great efforts you're doing up there.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Yeah, and a great job of laying out the strategic importance of this investment. Thank you. So I'll vote yes as well.
The chair will vote yes, and I just want to say, Todd, what you've done, though, is the fact that you are looking at, you know, renting to the food carts of the, you know, the expanding industry in Redmond is outstanding. I'm very impressed. You've taken it to a whole new level, so thank you for that. You know, you're making this, it's a significant investment to fix that kitchen up, but you're going to actually be way ahead when you do. So, yes. So thank you. Thanks for joining us.
Thank you so much.
And we'll get back to you on the other ask when Dan evaluates that.
Okay, perfect, I appreciate it. You guys have a wonderful day.
Thank you. Dan, is there anything else we need to talk about?
No, that was what was the commissioners had requested for businesses here. The ARPA balance, just as an update, is down to $977,298 left over, and then there's $1.7 million left in health services contingency.
Thank you, Dan.
Of course.
Thank you.
Great, okay, we have item number eight, and I just need to make a personal phone call for my sister.
Well, yeah, let's just take a moment then.
I'm sorry.
On a site-specific resource, if it's the type of use that's typically found in rural areas, you know, does it fit in kind of with the surrounding community? And does it require any additional public facilities or services upgraded? So really, Luba was only focusing on this number one, this site characteristic piece of the number of workers.
So, yeah, being a public meeting, and I guess this is kind of Dave's feedback to me, because I think this is getting silly. I mean, the applicant is being put through the wringer in the state of Oregon a time and time again for a simple ask that generally, you know, has been challenged and legally challenged, but now we're coming back saying, well, maybe he'll have this many employees in the future, maybe he'll have that many employees in the future. So, I mean, I guess this is my moment to protest the system. And I don't, I, you know, maybe this is all I'm going to say on the subject, but this is getting silly, how, what this applicant's been going through. You know, so you're, you know, professional staff saying, well, according to the rules, we've got to follow this. I think we fell off the logic train a while ago on what we put a private property owner through in a situation like this. You know, I don't want to discredit myself from being able to make a decision, knowing that, you know, this is private property and there's going to be X amount of people doing something on the property that we have to guesstimate in the future to document, to show somebody at the state. The system's falling apart at this point.
I mean, it's, I haven't tracked this whole process, but it seems to me that if the, if what, if what, you know, all of this is trying to assess is whether this is an appropriate use in this, in this location, the question of whether it fits the rural industrial, you know, framework or kind of parameters, I think it is important. And maybe, you know, certainly, maybe it should have been more specifically raised or answered or addressed earlier in the process, but, you know, the basic question, I think, is, is relevant. But, you know, that, that, that's, you know, coming in at the tail end, I, you know, I think it's a legitimate question to ask, but whether it should have been asked much earlier or addressed much earlier is, but, you know, that's a, I think that's a fair, fair concern.
Well, and as, as you, we can be on a board of commissioners and, and, you know, get the facts and rule on this. And I mean, I'm picking, I'm questioning the logic of the state land use system when we put a private property owner through a path like this for so long, for so much money, with an advocacy organization that is just empowered to be able to say, well, let's just appeal it a little bit more, just one more time, and we'll just keep going, let's see if he's going to break. I mean, it's just not cool for private property rights in the state of Oregon. So, as I say, I'm not, I don't need to debate with you on that, I'm just referring to, oh, this is getting kind of silly.
Can I ask what the, what the magic number is? Or like how, you know, like, you know, how that's calculated for a given use or a given location? And so that, you know, we get a preview of how we're going to need to evaluate this when, when it comes before us.
That's a great question, Commissioner. So I would, I will say that the burden of proof is on the applicant to demonstrate, you know, how they're quantifying the number of employees. There is one other case where this, you know, criteria of what, what is a small number of employees was tested. And in that case, it, the applicant essentially had to look at all the uses that would potentially be allowed in this zone and estimate, you know, from whatever, you know, reports or, you know, handbooks there are out there, the number of employees that could be associated with a particular use, like a warehouse or a veterinary clinic, veterinarian clinic, and essentially say, here's, you know, the worst-case scenario, here's, you know, an average. And then we would use that as staff to, you know, make a determination of if that's rural or urban. But again, there is, there is unfortunately no finite number, but it's, it's essentially just, you know, kind of that characteristic of, you know, is it, is it a major warehouse, like an Amazon facility, or is this more of a, an agricultural processing facility that's serving the surrounding area? I would look to Peter or Nick, maybe, if, if you have any other, you know, items you would want to add to that.
Thank you. I don't have anything else to share, other than for the board. I hear the frustration about the system and the process, but please know, this won't be the end. This is the plan amendment. If this is ultimately approved, Mr. Acetti, or whomever the property owner, will then need to come through a site-specific development proposal, and that will then go through another process where they'll then need to determine compliance with whatever this number is, and that will also still be subject to appeals, et cetera, through the same path. So this is one step among many in the past to potential, potentially several in the future for this property and this use, whatever the ultimate use is.
Yeah, Madam Chair, members of the Commission, Peter Gatawski, Community Development Director. I would, just in terms of the history, which Commissioner Devone duly notes, there was a comprehensive plan amendment that the board directed us to undertake during the first proceeding. Luba found that our comprehensive plan was restrictive in its policies in terms of allowing for future rural industrial uses. And with the board's, previous board, the direction was to amend that plan to allow other eligible property owners to take advantage of that designation. We got that text amendment, or comprehensive plan amendment went through, it was challenged, it was upheld by Luba, and then that followed up with the most recent application that went forward and was remanded on this narrow issue that Nicole has summarized, and I, I think she said it very well. It's going to be up the, up to the applicant to demonstrate that the number of employees that are being contemplated for the most, as I understand it, possibly the most intensive rural industrial opportunity can be demonstrated to be still rural. And so they'll offer that, that burden of proof and articulate it, but it is duly noted that this process has a significant history, and the property owner has been diligently trying to redesignate their property to take advantage of higher and higher, more productive uses. The one thing that Luba did affirm that was, that was not overturned by the courts, and it is, I would say, acknowledged, is that the property is no longer recognized as having an agricultural, it's no longer recognized for having agricultural values. Luba found that it, based on the soil analysis, the change in circumstances with the overpass, other uses, the improvements on Highway 97, that it no longer met the, met the definition of, of agricultural lands as defined in Goal Three. So they've kind of been halfway there, and they're trying to get it over to the other side where they can take advantage of a rural industrial use and then go through site plan review, as Nick noted.
So then, the next, so I do feel like the state land use system is asking what your future is going to be in, in a very dynamic, turbulent time. And, I mean, is that a fair question? So that gets back to kind of the legality of this situation, which is, I'm thinking of the applicant's base right now, but the state's saying, okay, well, what do you think you're going to do in the future? Well, it's my private land, I'll do whatever is optimized for, you know, productivity and profit. Well, what do you think that's going to be? Well, I think it's going to be, you know, storing whatever they have out there now, and it could be, you know, squeezing hay and sending it to overseas, which is, that's what he wanted to do originally. Why is it any business? Well, we just kind of want to know how much, how intense is it going to be? It'll be intense as we, as we can make it, if it's profitable. So why are we asking the future question that's not even out there yet? I do think it's a function of sewer capacity, environmental impact, so that's a huge process we have in place, and nobody's going to be able to build a building that has an interior, you know, bathroom or process of any sort, you know, food production or anything, that isn't going to have a full sewer system associated with it. And then it's a function of water supply, which is a problem anyways, because it's irrigation water, or, you know, a well, which will be, you know, documented. So we're asking about the future. As I say, I'm not upset at you, I'm just trying to lay it all out here right now. We're asking about the future to a private property owner and trying to put a box around it before they even get to dream about their property?
Well, Commissioners, I'll, just because I've been through this for many years as well, just probably two comments. One, and I'm not trying to justify anything to the state, and by the way, the state in this context is Luba, the Land Use Board of Appeals, it's not the department or anybody else, it's a court system that's, that's asking these questions. Piece number one. Piece number two, one of the threshold issues, and going back to what Peter said, which can't, we can't underestimate, the fact that the property's no longer agricultural use, that's a big hurdle, and, and they've passed that hurdle in, previously. What's so important was, when we started this process many years ago, and we thought about, is this rural industrial land? The threshold question was, can we even allow that use in rural areas? Because we looked at, one of the questions that was raised in that initial process was rural industrial uses were pre-existing. They were all identified in the 1990s, that was one and done, and were, were over. So when we actually approached this and worked with the State Department of Land Conservation and Development and, and others, and the board directed staff to initiate the amendment to Deschutes County Code, or the comprehensive plan, both, the plan, we answered that question for the state that, yes, it's not, it wasn't just a moment in time in the 1990s, you can do it now. So that was another big hurdle to get over. So there were two big hurdles. One was the EFU zoning, and the second was, was to answer that question that, yes, rural industrial is still possible to designate in, in rural areas. So those are just two other pieces. So you're right, in terms of asking what the future is, I think the state is probably trying to figure out, so how do we do this? Now that we've answered the question, you can do it, it could be Luba's trying to figure out, so what does that mean? I'm just guessing.
Well, so then, is this setting a precedent? So, is a Department of State lands did a plan amendment and zone change for Stevens Track, DSL did it, and now that we found that that's a path that other people can follow, generally follow. So is this in that scenario too? You know, so I guess this is thinking, big picture for the state of Oregon, is, does this have statewide significance? Because I've always thought of it as, it's Deschutes Junction, there's a huge overpass that cut a, you know, a farm parcel in half, and it was never even a profitable farm parcel in the past anyway, so this is just one of those unique situations. But does this have statewide significance? Does anybody have a feel for that?
It could.
I mean, I, I think-
I'd never thought of it like-
Plan amendment zone changes are under greater scrutiny today than they were in the past, and so-
Because of that scenario, where, oh, well, you did it over here, like pulling the Schaefer case out after, what, the 80s or something?
Eighty-eight, before the incorporated rule. I, that's, so we can't say that dispositively, like, that it's not precedent-setting, but it's, I will say, one of the recommendations that Nicole articulated is limited de novo, which is the staff recommendation, impels, and there's really the applicant and the advocacy organization, and maybe a few others, but it's not, the people that have standing are really small. And it's really just honing in on this, this, I dare say, one of, the last issue that's, that's holding up this opportunity to convert, to change the designation to rural industrial. If you go de novo, you, you could be hearing a multitude of other issues. Staff with legal counsel will have to rein it in, because it's really honing in on this issue of about employment or any other factor that can be used by the applicant to demonstrate, this is a rural opportunity, this is how it's going to be, this is how we're demonstrating it's going to remain rural, under the rural industrial zoning. So-
But does it have statewide significance? Because I'd never thought of this as, I thought it was just such a unique thing in Deschutes County, and now, you know, maybe there is a bigger picture here.
You don't see a lot of rural industrial uses, right? And, and so I, you know, parties could be watching, you know, Luba did acknowledge that our county, through the, through the action of the Board of County Commissioners, can, can open opportunities through a policy document-
That others could-
For those that are eligible, can demonstrate that they're eligible, and, and then there's a process to execute it, right? And that's what Mr. Acetti's experiencing, as articulated by Commissioner Devone. It's arduous, it's litigious, and I, I dare say, just like maybe the Schaefer's case is being cited, if, if, if Mr. Acetti's successful, and I'm not trying to predetermine an outcome, other, other areas of the state, other counties may find, wow, here was a path that Deschutes County chose, there may be some, some ability to, to draw parallel circumstances.
Well, and it's a statewide, you know, single system. So yes, it's, everything's a precedence, because if anybody can do one thing in one place, could reference it and say, well, he got to do it, why can't I? It's because it's a one-size system.
And Schaefer acknowledges in the Luba remand that it's a case-by-case decision. So, you know, each, each opportunity, if there are, elsewhere in Deschutes County or throughout the state, are going to draw on those local characteristics.
I want to hear about this map that you put up for us.
Sure, yeah. So this is just another visual, so the property is outlined in red, and then you can see the existing Deschutes Junction rural industrial area across Highway 97 and the surrounding zoning districts. So orange is EFU Ag, MUA 10 is yellow, and then RR 10 is red. So just a broader map of the area and its zoning designations.
And what is that, that green kind of circular patch that says FP?
Floodplain. So that's something likely, an irrigation pond that's been mapped as a floodplain.
So it's a, there's an irrigation pond, maybe that's that center circle, and then there's a whole floodplain area around it as well?
Must be just a rural area, because there's no-
Where there's roads. I mean, okay, interesting.
Yes, a floodplain within a floodplain. How lucky. Okay, so limited de novo seems like the way to go, truly. And let's hope that we can get our decision before August 5th, so that Mr. Acetti's battle continues on, whatever that might be.
Excellent. So if it's the board's pleasure, well, we will send out the notice of public hearing this afternoon, noting that it will be a limited de novo hearing, and then I'll work with legal counsel just to kind of create a system during that hearing. If we start going into area, areas outside the scope of review, that will notify you so that we can kind of stay on track with limited de novo.
I propose beanbags that legal counsel can throw at the parties as they go beyond the limited scope.
They focused, everybody.
Beanbags. Oh my gosh, Dave.
You've got me on the scope.
On the scope. Well, and then, so the big picture again is the, Luba has remanded it to, a decision to Deschutes County. Deschutes County said, okay, we think we got it all lined up, the applicant, the appellant, everybody, and we created a decision. Now it's handed back to us, and the applicant had to respond to that, to say, okay, I'd like to proceed again, and bring it, you know, for review in this 120-day period.
Correct. The applicant had to initiate the, the remand, so they had to-
Or it would have just expired.
Correct. Yes, it could have expired.
Yep.
Yeah, so they had to initiate the remand, I think, within 180 days.
Okay, it sounds like we're organized for the 18th.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I do just want to mention that, you know, it's, it's a little bit beyond the scope of this property and, and this process, but if the county wants to demonstrate to the community that we are paying attention to the rural character of the landscape, the, I'm calling it the Fort Thompson Park Concept, it's actually a pretty good way, it's basically just a mile, mile and a half south of, of here. It's a pretty good way to demonstrate to the community that we, we do care about what land stays, stays rural or open, or, or, you know, farm or other open space uses, and which land becomes industrial or, or more intensive uses, and we're, and we're kind of thinking about that in a deliberate way.
So what are you referring to, Fort Thompson?
The 500 acres that we, that the county owns, that I've been talking about as a potential park or campground location.
So named Fort Thom, I just hadn't heard that term before, is what I'm referring-
Fort Thompson Lane is the road that-
Okay, the name of the road that's there, okay.
For lack of a better-
No, that's good.
-label, I've, I've just started calling it the Fort Thompson Property.
Okay, understood. And as I say, I do support that, you know, what, what other opportu, opportunities do we have in support of ruralness but possible housing? You know, temporary campground, which is non-optable housing, is what I was referring to, but yeah. People are living on the public lands already, so maybe there's another way we can do it.
Perhaps. Okay, thanks, Nicole. Thank you, Peter. We are now at other items. Peter, did you want to bring your-
I did, and I recognize, thank you, I have colleagues behind me that I know have been waiting patiently, I think, for executive session. This is in regards to the planning commission vacancy for Sisters.
Yes.
And I just wanted, I made you guys a copy of, we have five, well, I should, I should talk to, like, her one again.
Oh, that's okay. I'm trying to reach it.
And, Peter, as you give me these, and I know Sharon's online, Sharon, I'll give you my copy, so that you have one for the record.
Well, there you go.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioners, again, for the record, Peter Gatawski, Community Development Director. The Board of County Commissioners extended the recruitment period in, basically, an additional month. This is for a Sisters area vacancy due to Steve Swisher, who is completing his two terms, and his term ends at the end of June. The, the Board of County Commissioners extended the recruitment to the end of April, and we now have five candidates. So we got three additional candidates as a result of that extension, and I'll, if it's helpful, I can just give you a brief overview, I can, I can tell you who the names are, and then again, you know, looking for next steps, how you would like to undertake the interview process. But five candidates, if it's helpful, one is Dirk Van Howling, a builder-developer, I believe this person's retired, but worked in the region for decades. Roger Johnson, who's the Sisters Camp Sherman Rural, he's the fire chief, he's also the director of the Oregon Fire Chiefs Association. Matt Cyrus, who's a managing member of Aspen Lakes Golf Course, a farmer, and is, among other affiliations, is, I think he's leading the Deschutes County Farm Bureau. Mark Kelly is a retired attorney, attorney, who emphasized, his emphasis was in construction law, and was a member of the Deschutes County Facility Review Committee, and I look behind me at Kristy Bollinger, both, both Mark and I were able to participate on the Simpson Request for Proposal. So Mark played an integral role in those conversations and providing input to that process. And then lastly, Jack Farley, who's a Realtor, has expressed interest. So a good group of candidates, representing, you know, with different skill sets and backgrounds, and I'll turn it back over to you, Madam Chair, just in terms of looking for input in terms of how soon you might want to conduct interviews and the type of process you might want to utilize.
Okay.
Just one note, so last time we were, I remember it was brought up that we just had, we had the two names that were kind of close to Sisters, or possibly not in the zone, or whatever, but I just want to acknowledge that, as we started that conversation, I didn't know they were the only two names, you know, so the last time we spoke about this, it's good that we opened it up, because I, I assumed there was maybe four or five, and we were talking about two that might not have fit the criteria, but we were only talking about those two. And I, as I say, when we started talking about it, I didn't understand that. So I'm glad to see five now.
So we actually have three that live within the Sisters criteria?
There's, there's, there's four, based on confirmation with one of the candidates. They, they're, they are now living in the Sisters area. I think previously they were in the Greater Bend area, but we, I did speak to that candidate, and they do, they do live in, in the Sisters area region. There's one that technically lives in Tumalo, but nonetheless has expressed great interest to be, to be considered as a planning commissioner.
Yes, apparently this is a highly prized position, and thank goodness, we have five people now to choose from, so I, I'm assuming, what, we could have interviews with all five of them? Is that, would that be too overwhelming for your schedule, Peter?
Not, I, Commissioner, I look to the, I-
What did we do last, last time we talked, what, half an hour?
We interviewed, we interviewed four people.
Right.
And it, we had two commissioners, well, actually, each commissioner ultimately participated in the process, but the interview that we set up was with Commissioner, Chair Adair and Commissioner Chang. Joining me, to ensure that we didn't have a public meeting, was Jessica Curis, who's the chair of the Planning Commission, so one of us was matched with a commissioner, and we spent, I think it was a kind of a full morning interviewing those candidates. And, and then it was such a competitive field that Commissioner Devone also expressed interest, and we followed up shortly thereafter, so he could have an opportunity to, to meet them as well. So staff is at your pleasure, Madam Chair and Commissioners, in terms of how you would like to proceed. My, my schedule will work, because I'll make it work to fit yours, I know yours are likely going to be, have more demands than mine. So whatever works for you is going to work for me.
Okay.
I would request that we keep it to the four Sisters area candidates, you know, it's, this is a Sisters area seat, and there will be opportunities to seek at-large positions in the future.
Actually, Tumalo is supposed to have a seat. It's not required, but it's strongly suggested, and I've heard from people in Tumalo, so after we fill the Sisters seat, we really need to go back and, in the next earliest possibility, fill a seat from Tumalo. It's, it's truly, needs to be part of ours. So, okay, so that would, what? Because Jack is, John Farley is outside the line, you're saying, then we wouldn't interview him?
That was, certainly a recommend, a suggestion by-
Okay, well, he could, he could apply then for the Tumalo, when we bring Tumalo back.
Just, just for context on that note, and we've talked about this in the past too, so a year from now, we'll have two, two planning commissioners who will term out. And one is an at-large position, and one is a Bend area commission. And there's, I will work with the board, you know, approximately a year from now, to figure out the way that the board would like to proceed. There's, recently, there was an at-large member that was just appointed, that person lives in the Bend, does live in Bend. In the past, the board could reassign the Bend area position to that, to the new member, that would then in turn create two at-large positions, and then the board could-
But what happened to Tumalo? Where was Les Hudson when he was appointed? Was he not appointed from Tumalo?
He wasn't at large.
He was at large, but, but the point-
But if you look at our documentation, Tumalo is right there.
Tumalo is recognized, right, to have representation. The point I was offering for the board, and we can talk about this, when, you know, approximately a year from now, is if the board is interested to recruit for an at-large, if we create two at-large members, one could be truly at-large to receive input from any corner of our county, and then the second position, if you reassign the newest member to the Bend area title, you could discreetly recruit for a Tumalo area member. So there's, the point of saying all this is, we can, staff can work with, with this board when those positions become vacant, again, in a year from now, at the end of June of 2023, and, and upon receiving your direction, we will initiate recruitment to fill those positions that meet your expectations. At the end of the day, as I coordinated with, with, with county council, it, it's ultimately the board's decision, and geographical representation is to the greatest degree possible. So the board gets to choose how, how you want your commissions to be represented based on geography. So for those that are interested in Tumalo, there, all things being equal, I would, one can anticipate there will be opportunities in, in, you know, 2023.
I mean, Tumalo is a significant part of Deschutes County, and of course, because I drive through it every day and I see what's happening there, I just truly want to see representation. Okay, if it takes a year, fine, but I, I really want to see representation from there.
We are, I mean, recognizing that Tumalo is a really important part of the county, we are, we are kicking off this community plan update process, which I think is a, is a really good opportunity for a lot of people from Tumalo to engage directly in community development and planning. for a lot of people from Tumalo to engage directly in community development and planning processes with the county. So, you know, I kind of feel like that's a really good place for people from Tumalo to be plugging in in the near future. And, you know, I'm certainly not opposed to, you know, actively looking for someone from the Tumalo area when we go to fill at-large seats in the future. And who knows, maybe through this community planning process, you know, people will emerge who are, you know, more broadly interested in the way that county, the county does community development work across the entire county, from Tumalo.
So Dusty Loop Trail, according to my map, is basically about halfway between Bend and Sisters. So it's just about Sisters country too. So I'm just pointing out that it's not way out of bounds that he put his name in there.
It's almost on the line, but not quite.
Well, I just acknowledge, I mean, it wasn't way out of bounds that he asked. So, I mean, I'd be supportive of talking to him, but I mean, if we're paring him down, maybe we're not going to talk to him anyway. So, you know, I mean, I'm very happy, because remember, he's the one that went to county college and he's been here with us a few times. So he's very engaged. So I'm happy that he's been involved. So-
I think we should talk to all five of them.
There you go. So I support that too. If we're going to do it, let's talk to all five. Because, and then, you know, just his acknowledgement that he's engaged in the system at this time.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, I was just trying to, if feasible, you know, kind of reduce the burden on staff, on whatever members of the planning commission who are going to participate in this interview, in these interviews with us as well. Four is less than five. But if, you know, I didn't realize that the location that we're talking about is close to the boundary of the Sisters area. That's fine.
It's truly close. So Peter, do you have enough direction? You'll find some spot?
I could have one follow-up question, just to get a sense of how many Commissioners want to participate in the interview process?
I would like to participate.
And I'll participate. Yeah, so let's just do all three of you. Unless, I mean, I'll participate. I don't know if Commissioner Adair would.
Of course I would. I've been battling for Tumalo for, and real Sisters.
Okay, so are you comfortable-
Maybe 20-minute interview.
Yeah, 20-minute.
With 20 minutes, we can, the questions, did you like the questions that were asked last time?
I see them as conversations, as a conversation starters for every one of them and take notes.
We can use the same questions. And then, are you interested in having Chair Kieris participate? And then if there's three of you, would you like, you know, reach out to Vice Chair Altman? And then there's-
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay.
Yes, Jessica and Susan.
Well, and if there's another planning commission wants to be involved, you know, we can pair up with all three of us.
And then I'll just coordinate with your schedules. We'll try to take advantage of this. Would you, are you open to the next couple, prior to budget? And we'll make the schedules work?
Yep.
Okay. That's what I needed. I really appreciate your time.
There we go.
And I promised Steve again yesterday, we were having Carrot K at his retirement party. So-
Duly noted.
I know. It's just like, he mentioned it yesterday at the Sisters meeting. So-
Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Whitney, yes, you have something for us?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. For the record, Whitney Hale, Deputy County Administrator. As I indicated yesterday in an email, we received a request from staff at the City of Redmond for board consideration of a letter of support relating to Infra grant funding for just over $52 million. This grant request would support the US 97 Redmond South Corridor Freight Connectivity and Multimodal Improvements Project, which will improve two miles of highway on US 97 in the south area of Redmond. So bringing this letter, staff at the City of Redmond drafted this and submitted it for your consideration, but happy to answer any questions that you may have and/or coordinate with city staff on those questions, depending on their nature.
I don't know if we have this information, but Infra was the grant program that North Bend Projects qualified for. Is this another cycle, or is it a different allocate? I don't have a feel for the big picture for Infra at the federal level. And I'm supportive of asking for money. That's the easy part.
Yeah, that's a good question. And I think something we could coordinate with Chris Dodion. I think he would have that at the tip of his fingers. I don't have a sense of-
Yeah, we could just have a follow-up email, just so we have a feel for what the big picture is. Because it was exciting, you know, Commissioner Adair was able to go advocate, I think, in Washington DC even.
No, I thanked Transportation Secretary Chau for the money.
Oh, it was a thank you afterwards. Yeah, there you go.
And she goes, how did I get there? So anyway, yes, I did thank her in person.
At the Pentagon, right?
Yeah, yeah, it was at the Pentagon. So anyway, that was-
Well, we got to see the Transportation Secretary Buttigieg at the NACO conference too. He was up there with us.
Okay.
My understanding is that there's multiple pots. And so when this says infra slash rural grant programs, that's one pot of infra funding. And I was just happy to hear from our Road Department Director, Chris Dodie, that as far as he knows, there are not other applications pursuing the same rural grant program within Infra.
Yeah, so Chris knows all about it. Great. That's good information.
I'm supportive of this letter.
Yes. As I said, I definitely want, would like to see that happen. And the fact that, yes, we probably need a motion, please?
Move approval of a letter in support of an Infra Rural Grants Program application for the US 97 Redmond South Corridor Freight Connectivity and Multimodal Improvements Project.
And I will second it.
Any further discussion, Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner DeBoe?
Yes.
And the Chair of the chair. Thank you, Whitney, for pulling that together.
Thank you, Commissioners. We'll get you a follow-up answer, Commissioner DeBoe, and share that with the rest of the board as well.
All right. So are we ready, can we do executive now then? I mean, I know my, our team's here.